Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the June 2nd, 2015 Village of Newport's Planning Board meeting. At 7:03, I would like to call the meeting for order. My name is Maurice Whitman. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Other members this evening are John Litten, Liz Harshol, Michael Zierler, and Rich Stephens. George Rodenhäusen is our Attorney, and Brogan Rose Odalo is our Secretary. A village planner, this is his 15th day on the job. But who's counting? Dave Gilmore and our new Mayor is...
Second Deputy.
Is he second? How many hours do you have?
If we're not there?
Okay, our agenda consists of a public hearing, two new applications, and some other business which we will discuss as time permits. The public hearing is for our application number PB1509, and it's a site plan application to move a garage that's at 60... It's actually to tear down and rebuild the garage, but at 60 North Mannheim. And the Racanellows are here. Come up there, bring a chair, or two chairs. Okay, so we have... There isn't anything we have to do before we open a public hearing, right? So may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, anybody in the public wish to speak to this application, this project? Hearing none, seeing none, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
And will we close both hearings?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, last meeting, we deemed the application complete and declared it a Type 2 under SEACOR, and we don't have to refer this to the county. We have a draft resolution that our Attorney provided. Is there any other comment that anybody has, anything I'd like to say? All right, I will make this... This is very brief. I just read the "Now Therefore," if you want me to do it. You're kind of skimpy. It's like cheap. Okay. Now Therefore, it's hereby resolved... This is a resolution to approve the site plan application. Now Therefore, it's hereby resolved by the Village of Newport's Planning Board that the application for site plan approval is hereby approved with the details set forth in the undated site plan and the building elevations prepared by Gray's Woodworks, and the Planning Board Chairman is hereby authorized and directed to sign the approved site plan. May I have a second to that, please?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that okay?
All right.
Good enough for us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, this is draft, so I can't sign this.
Now the work starts. Now the payments start.
That too.
So you'll have to work with...
It should be worth more tax money, too, eh?
With the building... You have to work with the building inspector, get your building permit, and...
Basically, what do I have to do from here? Just go see Mr. Travis again?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have to be there, or can my son just...
Your son can do it.
Okay.
Okay. That keeps things simple.
Did you get a demolition permit for the garage, and then a building?
What, we were tearing the...
They will tell you what you need.
Okay.
We're amateurs with that, but the building department will direct you.
That sounds good.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for keeping this simple.
Okay, we have an application. Our application number is PB1506. It's an application to re-subdivide a lot on Mill Rock Road. And it's... The address is 34 Mill Rock Road, and the people involved are Spool and Lester. Are they here this evening? Would you pull up your chairs, please? Give me one second, please. Okay, George, would you walk us through your report? Have the applicants... Have you seen the meeting memo that our Attorney drafted?
No.
Sorry. I'll give you these two. You can look at it as George Rodenhäusen reads.
You can look at the rest of it to as all public information, but the part about this is number two, 1234 Mill Rock Road. So as you're saying, the application is to split the property in half, because between you, and add one half to one lot, and one half to the other lot. It's called a subdivision even though there's no new lots created. In fact, you're losing a lot. So there's no fees for any new lots. But by my comments here, you'll see the list, which is a list of 12 items that, under our zoning law, or under our subdivision law rather, there's requirements for preparation of a subdivision flat that are pretty standard. And what you submitted is clear in terms of what you want to do, but it's not a proper subdivision flat. The subdivision law allows the Planning Board to waive elements of the flat that it feels are not necessary. It will need to do that if it approves this in a resolution of approval.
Is this a subdivision or a lot line revision?
Well, the lot line revision is a subdivision under the subdivision law and under the zoning law of this village. So there's no such thing as a separate lot line adjustment. So there are 12 items here. We can go through some of them are very simple, like name and address of the owners of the land to be subdivided. The point here really is that you need to prepare the subdivision flat that will show the new... Pretty much the way you had, and include all this information on the flat. Now, some of this is like topography may not be necessary if it's a flat piece of property.
There are no restrictions.
Right, so let's just run through this. Name, address are simple. Map of surrounding property owners and major roads is scale 2,000 feet to the inch.
That does, I believe, the original plan that we gave you that included all three lots, and the lots behind it have the names of the owners.
Right.
That was a true...
These two... See, I got one by email.
Yes, these were the more recent ones.
Is this part of a larger subdivision flat?
No, well, this is... We purchased... We're friends, but we're also neighbors, and we purchased that piece of land together.
No, no, he's talking about the actual...
I'm sorry, this... It seems to be cut off, but is this the entire document?
That's the entire document.
And they have been sold a copy?
I believe. Maybe it was sold a copy and they cut it off. There was a survey done that included all three pieces of property to show how it was being divided.
That's what it does, yeah.
And then we had additional surveys done of what each property will look like. That's the actual surveys for each property after the lot lines.
Right, that's what these are, the stampings.
Right. Okay, good.
So notice the restrictions on the land. Topographic conditions. Does anyone know if this is level land? Is it level?
Very low.
Yeah.
Names of joint property, names of record is on this one?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
This one doesn't have the names. All the copy you want to sign.
We don't have the...
And no one should have a name of the property owner.
I don't have this. Yeah, this is...
Okay, yeah, these are the ones that place the notice.
Is this... So that's the before.
So, no, these are the after.
These are the after.
This is the after. This is after this line's moved over.
So this, and then this one here. So these are the new lots.
Okay, so you've done all this. Dimensions of public property, street lines, and eastens and west. You've got the properties on here. Location of existing and proposed sewers, water, drains, stormwater facilities.
None.
You've stunned it.
They said there were drawings on it. We're not developing the property.
Location with the grade of proposed with the...
It's cut off. That's under the drawings, I would assume.
There's no land to be set aside for recreation or public purposes.
Right.
Well, our recreation, but no public purpose. Unless you're invited to a party. There's no provision of utilities there. There's no location, dimensions, or status of proposed deed restrictions or easements. And there's no need for an engineer's certification of adequacy of utilities, because there aren't any utilities.
George, what would you file?
Where was proposed sewer's the missing word?
What would you file with the county so the county knew to take the existing lot off the books and put these two new lots on the books?
We filed a subdivision flat that shows it all together, this one.
So that's the plot they would have to file?
We need to show one subdivision flat that shows revised lot lines.
Right, which that is.
Which this does. I think this is adequate. We have originals of this, don't we?
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Downstairs, if anyone wants to go get it.
Okay.
Is it missing the size like this is?
No.
Well, we have the original. That's all I'm asking.
We have a paper copy downstairs, and it looked like that one you have has some location on it. Presumably, I don't think we need it.
Well, what I was asking, and perhaps it's not necessary, but... But this seems to be clipped on either side. Does the copy we have downstairs contain that information?
Correct. It does contain the information. I'm going to run downstairs and get it.
No, it's okay. We have to have it for the public hearing.
Okay, so the filing.
Do we need the engineer's stamp for it to the public hearing, or...
No.
You'll need to be...
You have one of these with an engineer's stamp on it. Okay.
Oh, we do.
For the county clerk as well. You'll have to file with the county clerk. And then you'll need to do a deed.
I think the deed revisions are done already.
They're done, okay. So submit that to, if you have...
He was supposed to send that to you. He didn't send that to you.
Do you remember?
I haven't gotten it. Have you?
Haven't seen it.
Deeds. We need to have revised deeds for the two properties.
Well, it's not to revise deeds, it's to revise descriptions.
Right.
Right. Of the property lines.
It may be best to walk downstairs, but my recollection is that we do have deeds.
Yeah, the new meets and bounds.
These are the meets and bounds.
The new meets and bounds.
Meets and bounds.
Yeah. You didn't get this.
So, no, I didn't get this. Who owns the middle property now?
We do. We do jointly.
You do jointly.
They're divorced.
So, amicably.
That's sweet.
What you need to do is convey, so you have your own deed records that show that you're owning the whole property now. You need to convey the half to you, the half to you. And that's a simple deed, which will then... This is the meets and bounds of your new lot.
Yep.
This is the meets and bounds that the middle lot no longer exists.
Right.
Giving 25 feet to his property and 25 feet to my property.
Right, so what I recommend is that you do a deed to yourself, the two of you to you, and two of you to you, with the meets and bounds of that half you're getting and the half he's getting, so that you convey that property out to show who owns it now.
So a meets and balance that shows 25 feet and 25 feet?
You're saying do it as a deed to...
As a deed. Like you're getting... Is it 25 feet, roughly?
It's 50 feet across.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a building lot.
Yeah. And then you'd record that as well. And then you have a chain of title that will show that you own...
I'm not clear on what you're asking for.
What I'm saying is, this piece of land here, which is your half of what is now jointly owned, the two of you have to convey that out to you, and the half which is going to you, just saying left and right here. The two of you convey to you.
So that's a... Oh, so we're each giving a half to each other?
Yes, so that it's no longer jointly owned by you. It lines up with the subdivision flat which is now on file.
Right.
That you own this...
So we would have to have two more meets and bounds made, one for each of those, saying no being conveyed, and then a new meets and bounds includes it all. So it's like a whole package that just covers all the Ts and dots.
Yeah, but the point is a deed. In other words, convey that, do the meets and bounds, and then convey it over.
So we have a deed for the property. So make two new deeds?
Yeah, right, you have a deed for your property now. The subdivision will create the line that now separates the two. So you need... Because that doesn't change the title. The title is still with the two of you. You have to convey that out to you.
So then we have to have two more deeds?
Right.
But then we have two separate pieces of property, and then we have to combine them? Because I've done that before.
You can combine them, and you can just do a deed to combine them, sure.
So then you have to make a new deed for your property and combine the two. Right, I know that, okay. Because I've bought another lot on the other side of that house, and that added to my house. So I just had... Basically, I don't remember. I guess I must have had to redo the deed, and I just did the new survey when I did that. So it wasn't any conveyance necessarily at that point? But I only own it by myself, so maybe that wasn't necessary.
Yeah, it's not... If you own the properties, it's not a problem. Problem analogy, two of you own something, you've got to get it into one of... Your name only, and then into your other deed.
My name only.
Understand us?
Yeah.
George, what happens?
There's no money changing plans or anything. You're just doing this deed so that you have a chain of title that shows that now you own...
So we would need to have two deeds. So actually, once we have... So the deed would basically say that I'm conveying... I know what the deed looks like. So we're just going to change the meets and bounds on the deeds. And the wording should be two deeds, and one wording would be say... But how do we... When we subdivide it, how do we know who owns which half, technically?
The meets and bounds. Yep.
The meets and bounds.
The meets and bounds. The two of you have the whole thing.
Okay, so I take the meets and bounds, that the piece is going to him, and I say that I, as the owner... The two of you are, as partners, are conveying it to the children. So I can redo the deed myself once I have the new meets and bounds. That's not a big deal.
Yeah, right. Do it yourself.
Yeah, yeah. Looks like you already have this.
Nothing fancy.
I don't know if you have the meets and bounds for your half.
No, the new meets and bounds.
Right, that's what these are.
Right, but he's saying, he's saying get two meets and bounds. One for this one and one for this one. 25-foot meets and bounds.
This is conveyed to you, this is conveyed to you.
Okay.
Okay.
The planning board work done is when they exclude this. They're just telling you, you should go do this so that you have it in your names.
Right.
Your separate names.
So that's separate from the planning work. But we should do that just to have it legally.
Right.
No question asked, kind of thing.
But anyhow, we got through the list of what the...
So there's nothing on the list that's necessary.
I mean, I thought they were missing, but I didn't see the whole package here.
Well, we have to waiver the topos.
We have to waive the... We have to waive a certain number of things.
Well, some of the topo... What else goes there?
Items 7 to 12, I think.
Some of the dust block.
Or whatever. The numbering is terrible here.
Well, there are no existing streets or easements or...
This numbering or the numbering in the...
So number four, then number seven.
Number four definitely has to be waived.
That's what it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
George, not that this could ever occur with these two gentlemen, but what if one of them didn't do the 25-foot transfer? Could we get stuck with a really weird lot here?
The ownership of the lot would be the question.
Would be the question, okay.
Right, because the other person didn't do it.
They both have some...
Then one person would own 25 feet, and two people would own the other 25.
That's right.
Right.
Right, and they'd have to pay the taxes.
Whatever, you have to work it out between yourselves.
And the rent. And the rent. So there's four, seven...
Eight, nine, and 10.
Eight, nine, 10. But there's nothing on here that we need to do, so I don't know what has to be waived or not.
Do we have to waive things like utilities and...
Yeah, I think that's the point, is that all deeds are required, so we don't see any need for it, so we're going to waive that in the resolution of approval.
Okay, so what's left then is the...
Can I see the original one again?
Oh, I don't have that one. Some reason I didn't get that.
I don't have this.
I didn't get that either.
This was given to us during the pre-application.
As long as this... See, what we have is this, but as long as this shows it here. Who's... Well, the other map shows that. There's got to be a property line here. Right.
This is also a fragment.
Yeah, this is cut off. This is cut off.
Yeah, so you have one that...
I gave him an original line.
That's what Dave said.
So then this is adequate.
The full version of that are adequate. Okay.
So this will eventually form the basis for the vellum that they'll file with the county.
But this one, this will be the vellum.
Another one. Other forms for the county also, did you fill that? So I have to go make a step up and get the forms, and then each fill out?
They'll tell you what they want.
What? They'll tell you?
They'll kick it out if they don't get what they want, right? With the county.
Right, then they're done.
Yeah. Every county's different, and every county, you just follow their rules.
Great.
So we can determine this complete now?
I think so.
Okay. We need a short form EAF?
What is an EAF?
We need to see that.
So there's no EAF in the packet?
Yeah.
I think you said that in your letter. It's not a Type 2 action. It is not a Type 2. Actually, I checked the list.
So you have your application, but the last part of the application says that you've read, understand, and agreed to the SEACOR information, but...
But there was no SEACOR information. You didn't do a SEACOR.
Yeah, no, you just have to fill out a short...
Wasn't there part of the application, a part of that?
Throw me the email.
Let me see. I'm going to look it out.
Is the question if it's online?
No, the question is if it was filled out.
Right, I didn't have one, so I don't know if anybody else got one. So we'll need that.
Yeah.
So we'll need that before we can determine it complete?
No, I've... I think you can set the public hearing.
There's no law?
But we'll need the EAF before you can do your significantly determination.
Can they get that from our website? The short?
If you want to do it now, you mean?
No, no.
No, I think you get it from the building department.
Or just stuff?
On our website, on the...
Yeah, the DEC website.
Yeah, we'll give it to you.
Okay, or I can just stop by and pick one up at the office.
Or if I email it to you, then you can just fill it out in the document. Like typing it.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, why don't you do that, and then I can just figure out the PDF?
You can email the document.
PDF?
Yeah, easy.
Okay, great.
So fill out the form from DEC. Okay, so... So what that means is you'll have to have that when you come for the public hearing.
As soon as you sign it, I'll send it.
And this doesn't go to the county?
No.
It's not...
No, it's a minor subdivision.
Okay. Okay, so...
Did you want a motion to waive the items?
We can do that in the... Well...
Oh, after the public hearing?
Well, that'll be part of the...
It's going to be in the resolution.
Part of the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, so may I have a motion to determine the application complete?
Or deem your application complete?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so we will have the EAF by the next meeting so we can go through the SEACOR determination during the... Before the public hearing. May I have a motion to...
We have to make a motion?
Okay, we have to schedule a public hearing for June...
Huh?
May I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Tuesday, June 16th, Planning Board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Brogan... One second, John. Brogan will give you the information you need to know this list. You have to send things to... Okay, good.
To the neighbors?
Yes, and we have to publish something in paper and front. So that's all got to be done within how many days?
10 days.
10 days?
You have to sign these?
Do I?
No.
Just send the letter of signature? So can I just deliver them to their houses?
There's a checklist, or there's a... You ever heard of lists? That you just have to mail, and you have to put it in a drop box, and then it has to be a thing that you... That you delivered it.
You can go through that and then...
So I just have to mail it?
Yeah, just mail them, regular mail.
Okay, regular mail, okay. So this isn't all the people relevant to us, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is.
All of it?
Yeah.
How far... So it's not just a joint copy?
It's a 200 square foot radius.
Oh, okay.
200-foot radius.
200-foot radius.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All of our feet are square.
Anybody here doesn't like it?
Yeah.
Doesn't look good.
Good luck with that.
Okay, so...
I got one, only one.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
I would like those back if I could have them. Thank you.
And also, maybe if it's possible, after the 16th, if there's extra copies of the surveys that are needed, if I can have them back, the sample ones.
The stamped copies?
Just the sample ones if you don't need, if you didn't send them yet.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
You've got to make sure you go to PDQ2 and get your pink form post. It's in the packet, right? I'm sorry. If your packet says you've got your pink form post.
Go on the property.
Okay, Rich.
Oh, on the property.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is Goodwill Evangelical Presbyterian Church, 16th West Chesapeake, wanting to take over the building now known as Barnabas, PB1502. Good evening to you again, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Hi there. Let's see. Brogan, have we sent the memos from Dave and George? So you have those?
We received those.
Yeah. We received them yesterday.
I'm just glad to get them.
George, are you prepared to begin this, or to discuss the... No, we have, as you've seen, two reports, one for our attorney, one for our planner. And we will discuss them both and reconcile and figure out what's applicable. Thank you.
This is a site plan application. I don't know if Dave even addressed the question of special permit, but it seemed that the way our zoning law was amended recently, what is allowed by either special permit or site plan in the B1 district is allowed as a principal permitted use in the B2 district, which is where your building is, and principal permitted use is subject to site plan. All buildings are subject to site plan now in the town. There are no exceptions in the village. But it seemed like we left behind the special permit. Not an important detail, really, for you. It just means that we're going to follow the site plan requirements for this application. So we've got quite a few site plan issues just in terms of complying with our zoning law. And then Dave raised a... Dave, our village planner, raised a number of what I call planning issues that are somewhat different from technical requirements of the code. I listed here, and what, I hope you have copies, and these numbers, which are my numbers, not the code numbers really, 1 through 12 or 13, uh... Requirements of site plans that, um, that I didn't find on your submission. And I have to say too, that the code, as it's now written, does not give the planning board the authority to waive any of these requirements. I guess the assumption was that they would show up somehow in the plan. One of Dave's comments, I think a central comment, was that the board needs to see a single site plan, that is, a site plan documents, or a set of documents, one on top to say what's behind it, that will show all these, all these things that are listed in 1 through 13. But also, um... Give the basis for discussing all these issues, and for example, most important one probably, given the building that you're looking at, and, and the, I think, the limited amount of parking behind it, uh, the, uh... Location in which the proposed street servicing the area, uh, the size and capacity of proposed off-street parking areas, uh, location and treatment of proposed entrances and exits, uh... Those three things right there are all really planning issues that Dave has brought out, but also site plan requirements that they be shown, and, and of course, you're gonna have to estimate, and already have estimated, what your attendance will be, what the car traffic will be during services, when the services will occur, and how that will relate to car traffic in the streets at that time, it's not related to your services, and so what the load will be on the traffic, but those issues, to be able to figure them out. And then based on that information, the board has to determine whether the entrance and exits controlling traffic, and the parking spaces, the total number of spaces, and so on, are adequate for what you want to do. So that's, that's a whole cluster of issues there. The, uh, the building is a landmark, it's a historic building, uh, sold, and it, and that means that for SEACOR purposes, the environmental review, uh, will be a type one review, just means that the environmental assessment form initially will be a long form. And that's, uh, longer to fill out, uh, the, uh... The issue of being an historic building doesn't really affect your use all that much, uh, but there is, there are local laws here about historic buildings, historic districts, that could affect signage and the sort of thing that you wanna do. So they need to consider that, but the environmental assessment form being a long form, uh, for type one, hasn't been filled out yet, I don't think, it needs to be filled out.
No, they did a short.
They did a short form, so that needs to be done as a long form. And then the, uh, the form itself has to be circulated, uh, with a declaration of lead agency to whoever else, whatever agency might have some authority over this, some approval authority over this. Now, North Chestnut is Route 32, so that's a state highway, gives it, uh... So state DOT will be involved agency. The, uh, I don't know what other agencies, I mean, certainly all the village agencies need to be included in that circulation, but that's a step that we have to take, uh, as a board, uh... Which, which the board can only do once you submit the full, or it's called a full, it's a long EAF. And also, is a form is available online from D E C, and they can email it to you, or Brogan can if you don't have it, but that gets filled in online. The sidewalks, of course, all that's there already that needs to be filling in the plan, uh... The signage, I wasn't clear, I know that you had kind of photoshopped the, the new images on the existing building. Was that meant to be, that's where you were planning signs? That it's signed basically on your onings?
The show, it looks, but basically it's already existing.
Okay, so you probably have supplied that. Drawings, elevations, uh, exterior materials, factors in the site plan, the building staying the same in the exterior, I assume, the same brick, whatever it is. And, uh... I think given the fact that there's a lot of people movement here, you wanna show the interior, you did show some drawings of the interior layout.
In pre-submission, there was an interior drawing provided, yes.
Okay, so the board have to determine whether that's adequate. So, so all in all, uh, there is a traffic study that was done for parking, the board will have to decide whether that's adequate or not, that is, uh... That will be a major issue, that's what you have to say, the parking noise is a major issue for the village because there's not much parking for any new uses, and, and this particular use will have a lot of parking demand at one particular time, or more times. So, um, the board will have to look at whether that, uh, Mafia, isn't that his, is it Mafia? Whether his, his analysis is enough, is satisfactory. Uh, so that's, that's really all my comments were, and I think Dave's, Dave Gilmore's comments are a little bit more in-depth about some of his planning issues. So maybe it's time for them to discuss what they actually plan to do.
I was gonna say if Esther Gilmore wanted to...
Very interesting.
I don't have anything else to add, unless you had any questions regarding the amount.
Okay, so...
Can I ask some questions concerning some of your comments? Your first four comments, all this proposed streets, proposed building, proposed off-street parking, proposed entrances and exits, these are all existing, so my question is, does that really apply to this application?
Not proposed streets, no, but you wanna show the streets, proposed entrances and exits.
Yes, that's not a problem, we actually, unfortunately, we have a survey that came in after we actually provided the submission, so I'll be able to provide a lot of information that you're looking for very clearly at this point, but I just wanna determine that and make sure I understood the process as far as some of those comments.
Yeah, I think Dave's comment about the photo, area photos, that was not...
No, no, I understand, like, as I was saying, I've received an updated survey, so we can actually provide that additional information within a revised site plan. So your comment for number five, you're saying location identification of buildings within 100 feet doesn't, doesn't, landmarks, I don't see a problem with that, we just include that on the location plan? The location of proposed open spaces, parks, recreational areas, how, what's your distance on that from the property, or are you saying just on the property itself that we're proposing at this time? Is that in the area or just this location, I just wanna clarify at this point?
This is just going through 1223A, so if you... What number was that?
It's number six, but... I suspect it's just on the property.
I just went through the ones that I was finding here.
I agree with Michael, it's probably meant to be on the property, and, and then, part plan within the, that sort of limiting distance of the area that we show on the site plan, proximate to the proposed site.
Right, this, this is assuming you're going to new site.
Right, no, I understand, that's what I wanna clarify, 'cause that was my assumption as well, I wanna make sure I'm clear that time is due later on. The next item, number seven, stormwater detention facilities in accordance with 212-23D, we're not modifying the existing paving, um, at this time, is that something that actually applies to this? Have to clarify that as well.
Yes.
So we're in MS4 community, and understandably, what I think I heard you say is you're not doing work outside, so we just wanna, um, have some good housekeeping in terms of, for example, connections. Making sure there's no, um, eye and eye or not.
Broken lines and so forth, okay. This is a site, it's an assessment inquiry at this time? Okay. All right, number eight was location design of buffer areas and screen devices to maintain, and so you're speaking basically to anything, dumpsters?
Right.
In that one, okay. We'll add that to what the existing is, I don't think there's much in the way of existing on that one.
Do you have a copy of our, uh, of our village code that...
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's all.
I just wanna clarify a couple of these, 'cause somebody didn't think it applied to the situation.
Yeah, I was just using shorthand.
I would say, like, that would apply to fences and some of that sort, property edges?
Yeah, that's non-residential use, but that's what it's been, so...
But there are residences.
There are residences behind it.
Yeah, so if there are some fences...
That are on the property.
Yeah.
Well, there's one, um, there's residences behind, uh, the property, but to the side of property, there's one, uh, common record.
Yeah, so, yeah, both to the north and to the east, so, just if, whatever's existing there, just show it.
We'll identify it.
Yep.
I just wanna clarify as, as I say. Again, number nine, that's existing, obviously we can locate what's existing, we're not really presenting new sidewalks or walkways, we're maintaining existing locations. The specific location and size of signs, that's actually existing, but you want us to codify and note what's actually on the building at this time? You know, it's an existing condition.
Well, if you're gonna just use those existing, existing locations.
Sizes, yes.
Are you planning to make any changes, put up any new signs?
Basically replacing in kind, what's there, just whether different color or with obviously different name, and I have a board, and it was submitted, basically same size on the onings as well.
The board has to approve those, and they're not grandfathers, so they have to approve those, but they just need to be clear what they're approving.
Okay, and I understand that, but it wasn't clear to me whether you need to know the actual sizes of all the existing, or you just need to have the identification of...
Sizes, yes.
You need to have the size of the existing of this one.
Well, there are requirements now on size that we have to observe.
Well, I think it's the new signs that we're interested in, if they happen to be the same size as the old.
Or replacing the existing, that's why I say, I don't think it would be an issue, because you're replacing the existing with the same size.
Whatever we're ending up with, we have to see.
I know you need to see, I wasn't sure if you need to see the exact signage of...
Well, I'm gonna say it's a new site plan, so even though there was a, a commercial use there, it's no longer gonna be there, so you're putting your signs on it.
It's the new signs that we're interested in the size, and that's what we have to do.
Even if it's the same as the old?
Okay.
We don't, you're asking that we need to see the old?
Isn't right?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Again, I think you're both saying the same thing now.
You are, you're both saying the same thing, I think you're all saying the same thing. Making sure I understand.
Every of the Billard's sign, give us the size and information.
So number 12, you actually do need to see the exterior elevations of the building, the exterior materials listed, since we're not really modifying the exterior?
Well, they're not modifying it, I don't think that's needed, what do you think, Dave?
Maybe a few photos of the building as it exists during application, I'm generally comfortable with that if the board is, I...
I've done that before.
My recommendation was to get the intent of the applicant regarding the exterior of the building, and also the exterior of the site, so...
Right.
Photographing tour or something like that, if you don't part of the record, maybe? If you have a renovation.
To make a record of it.
That's not a problem, I think, actually that could be part of a combined signage. Item as well. Looking at David's report as well. We can provide a new site plan and pick up much of the information that you're looking for, it's item B, item A, I think is also being covered with a new site plan. That seems like dimensional information for how it complies with the existing, I just wanna clarify that, you need to see, you need to know it's still in the B2, and it's allowed use in the B2, you need to see the dimensional regulations for B2, you wanna see that on the plan.
See the what regulation?
Dimensional regulations, and how it complies, even though it's an existing lot, we're not modifying the lot, that's one of the items here, that's why I just clarify that.
Dimensions of the building, talk to me about.
It says dimensional regulations, I took that to mean the actual lot, 'cause lot comply, it says how the lot complies with dimensional regulations, setbacks and so forth, but again, that's all existing information. I wasn't sure if that's something you really need for the submission because of that point. I wanna clarify again.
I want that, I'm just asking David.
If it's something you need, we can provide, I just wanna make sure it's something I'm understanding, if you're reasoning to.
Why wouldn't we?
Yeah, I don't think we would want that.
Well...
If you wanna move a dumpster around or anything like that, we would like to know.
Wait, you're giving us a site plan that shows the location of the building correctly?
Yes, we can, we can provide this new drawing, we can show the setbacks, we can provide that, I'm just clarifying that it's required, even though it's an existing building and existing area that's allowed use, just wanna clarify.
I'm not sure there's a site plan for this site, do you know? Is there a site plan on file?
For Barnabas?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I believe so, yeah.
There's a, um, there's a site plan which I believe has been subsequently amended over a period of time, I didn't really, I, I looked at the file, I didn't look at, you know, I might have a good, um, understanding of all the amendments, or if it was, for example, more than that.
Okay. Thank you. Seems not a problem to me. Your question on 2A was, was there a formal easement for the parking in the next door? I don't believe there is.
I think there's no official easement, there's just an agreement.
So that'll have to be formalized, if that's what you're gonna rely on, we need a, a permanent easement, or at least an easement that goes as long as the use is in existence.
So that if the easement expires, it's...
So if the use goes away, the easement can expire, but it has to at least run as long as the use.
And if the easement goes away, the use?
Yes.
For this car?
Yes. Has come up before in the village.
Item B, where the adjacent off, off-street parking for the other side, we'll have to locate that and identify, I do have a plan that was, was used back in 2001 to identify that, we can use that, but we can also develop it from what's existing basis, and we'll provide that information. It appears on the next item, 4C, that there actually, the requirements for parking is actually less than what was in the parking report, from my interpretation of this, but I'll look into that and I'll review that, and I have some comments on the, the revised site plan.
Like to see the parking calculations on the site plan?
We'll provide that. No, under D, with the same item two, you're asking for location and treatment proposed entrance and exits of public rights of way, including channelization and other devices, I just wanna confirm, again, this is existing, we're not making the modifications to those, we're just identifying the existing information, or are you looking for proposed methods worth handling the new assembly? I'm just clarifying.
I just, can we, could I hear your question here, I'd like?
That's too...
Transportation D.
If you're not making any proposed change, then it's just existing.
Right, in which the survey would identify.
But it's gotta be on there.
Right, it'd be identified on the, on the survey, and I just wanna confirm that's what we're looking for, or if you're looking for new changes as required by what the planner believes is required for this new occupancy. Again, I would like to just clarify that.
Yeah, I haven't gotten that far. Do you, you think there, there are changes needed already, that enough to know that there's changes needed, or...
Changes in...
In the ingress and egress of traffic?
Nor have I got that far.
Right.
I will caution out to say that, um, there seems to be a finite amount of parking on the site, so, um... There is access and egress off of, uh, Caddie Street, I wouldn't wanna hazard a guess of how wide that is, that will be on the site plan presumably, and then there's access on, um... North Chestnut, as well as access on North Chestnut, on, I think, one driveway access, North Chestnut block to the north. North Chestnut, as well as access on North Chestnut, on, I think, one driveway access, North Chestnut Lot to the north. It may matter, there's, there's a circulation network in terms of pedestrian sidewalks on North Chestnut and Academy as well. So if there's something novel like a shuttle bus, or a bus stop, or I don't know what, then maybe we might want to consider those types of things, but that seems like it would come during subsequent dialogue, if that's appropriate.
Thank you. You already touched on E, which is contact and DOT. 3A, I think it's referencing back to the planning board to make a decision on the sign of concerns on the drainage connections, adjacent storm sewers. That's an open question, I believe we touched on previously, but you want to identify what's existing basically, at this point. Things not missing. On D, for 3, 3D, I just want to clarify the existing lighting program you're asking for. Are you saying the timing of the existing light, or the actual placement and the light spread of the existing light? I just want to clarify exactly what you're looking for on the existing for that item, when you say light program, apologize.
So if it's my understanding that there is existing lighting on the building, and there's a site plan with prior use, an amended site plan with a prior use, it would be my recommendation that if the board is comfortable at this stage is accepting the application that's complete with a inventory of the lighting that exists, that.
The county will require that, to show what lighting is there now, specifies that it's full cutoff, that it's not too bright. So they'll need to know the specifications of the lighting.
That's what I want to clarify.
As it exists, yeah.
There's, and we have some lighting standards.
Sure.
As a community, but a 23-page document or so.
And I wanted to confirm again, because it's existing light, I want to make sure that I understood that you want to see all that information as well. Thank you. Next item E was asking about the second floor accessibility. At this time, when the applicant was not proposing to make modifications, there is an exception under the building code to not add an elevator when the square footage of the size of the second floor is under 3, 3,000 square feet, which I believe. And that's not unfortunately listed, whether it's gross or net, in that exception. And I think we're just on the line, we're a little bit over 3,000 on gross, but under by net by quite a bit, because of thick masonry walls. So I was taking the interpretation in my mind that we're actually under apartment for elevator, especially this historic nature of this building, I think it'd be a shame to put an elevator in that.
Well, you must have seen my car when I drove in, though, that I carry a handicap.
Oh, I did not see that.
That's why I figured you were looking. I'm very concerned about it. It's one of the things that always bothered me about Barnaby's, that they didn't have to do that. That was one of the things I was going to be concerned when you bring this all in, is where are you going to put that elevator shaft?
I, I think it's fair to say that our goal is to have accessibility on the second floor. Just, I don't think we're prepared to do it before we actually move in. Short term, we intend to put screens downstairs to have handicapped people be able to actually see the service, but we'd like to get an elevator in as soon as possible because everybody should be the same thought worship space.
ABA is pretty strict on separate but equal.
I know they are for businesses, are they also for, they're not better than I, are they also for churches or?
I'm not sure.
Do you know that? Do you know whether ABA applies equally harshly to churches as they would to commercial buildings?
It would, it would be good to have the applicant provide their evaluation. I have not looked at this use and its relationship to concepts of public accommodation.
I know that the synagogue on Church Street went to great lengths to have an elevator put in, a lift.
So that bears.
So the services on the second floor.
I'm not so sure there's even one handicap parking space in that parking lot. I know we have, I know the village has provided one on the street, but.
On the adjacent parking lot?
On Barnaby's parking lot.
On the adjacent property, there was one designated on the previous plan. I'm not sure if it's still there. The painting might have worn off over time, I'm not sure. I'll clarify.
And it would be ideal, it would seem that if there, presumably there's going to be provision of some, and if you could use contemporary standards for those, those spots, in terms of layout.
Yes.
Access on both sides of.
Yes.
Stop.
So obviously, E is going to be reviewed further.
Uh huh.
To be honest with you, the secret was kind of a surprise to me personally. I didn't tell them we were going to be falling within the type one because of the store, so that was a surprise to me personally. Going to be reviewing that more in depth myself. The last item, 1C, I'm not sure if we can speak to at this time for the facade easement. That's something that's going to be discussed with the building owner, obviously because it's going to be affecting the building's use moving forward. Even after the, whether this use is granted or not. So that would be extensive impact for the building owner. We're going to have to have that discussion.
I'm sorry, I missed the location. Oh, that's in 1C, the side of the.
Right, yes, I'm sorry, the last.
Sorry.
I apologize. I didn't make that very clear. Otherwise, for A and B, it looks like it's just us making sure we show you what you're expecting to see for some of your planning processes. From what I can see here. I'm going to have to review that a little further myself. Thank you.
Who is the owner of the building?
Thank you.
Individually, individually?
That's an LLC.
It's an LLC.
It's an LLC, which is, the name of the LLC is what?
It's 16 North Chestnut.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, I see, 16 North Chestnut Street LLC. And it's, Manikiotis is the sole manager?
Is it your house owners? Three, three owners?
Three owners.
Three owners, that's part of that.
Okay. And so they, that LLC owns it now, and they're going to be leasing to the church?
That's correct.
So I guess the signature on here is Mr. Manikiotis?
Yes.
No, it's Josh Stewart.
Well, that's, that's me on the application.
Oh, you're Josh Stewart.
Yeah, there is a, there should be a form in there for the.
There is one, I think, there.
Okay.
David, do you have any other questions?
I do not.
Okay.
I'm trying to lay out some information for the board.
And you did very well, thank you.
Pretty thorough.
Any other member, Mr. Lippman, do you have any questions?
I have no more questions.
Mr. Stephens, George, any questions?
Nope.
So.
When is the next submission date?
Well.
Cut off for?
It's supposed to be two weeks from the meeting. Depending on the extent of the submission, and this looks like it's going to be substantial, we would probably want that, so that can be reviewed by anybody that needs to see it before we meet with you again.
When is the next planning?
So the next, after the 16th, it would be July 7th. So the submission deadline would be June 23rd, but if you want us to give it to us a little bit sooner so we could review it, just double check it, so you don't have to have another meeting or something like that, that'd be better.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
So, Mr. Gilmore, I want to thank you publicly, I've done so privately, for the thoroughness and the work you put into this memo, it's very helpful for us. Appreciate it. I hope you don't have to do this for every application.
No, but that was really helpful.
Very helpful for this. This is a, this is an involved thing, as you know.
Yeah, you're, it goes nice.
It's not key. Okay, so we have some items of other businesses. I wanted to do the easy one first, and that is the approval of the draft planning minutes from the May 19th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections that were made to you, Brogan? Did you get anything? Okay. We have a motion to approve the draft meeting minutes for the May 19, 2015 meeting.
I moved.
The second?
Second.
Further discussion? Any other, any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What do we need to know or do for the joint meeting coming up for the Druet Farm? Subdivision. Is there anything that's, we have to prepare for this?
We have the subdivision plan and package of materials.
Right, you said all that.
Uh huh.
And my understanding is that you
It seems like we're going to have.
Consent it to the joint meeting, and my correct understanding that it's a completeness determination, that subdivision.
Right.
I'm trying to review that application with your consent. I can provide some recommendations on that. One of the things I did do is just get clarification on the conservation easement that runs with.
Yes.
We're talking about agriculture in the rear, primarily in the town, accessed through a narrow, not relatively narrow, 100-foot access portion of the lot from the village into the town. And let's call it a large agricultural parcel, and then we've got a 10 or so acre parcel on the that will be in the village in your second subdivision lot. So I would probably provide a one or maybe two, one to two page memo, just laying out some overall planning analysis and recommendations on completeness. I tried to review the application.
Great, and, and the only issue that I can remember that brought up, and Mr. Stephens is not here, is that we, we wanted to make sure that the action we take doesn't result in there being able to build more buildings on properties.
On either of the properties.
Yeah, I, I think that was the, I was, I'm not much sure if that was, but what's your recollection, Mike? What's your opinion about that?
The easement, unless, I know there were some modifications to the conservation easement, but at this point, and I haven't looked at those, but the original easement provided for one additional building lot. But at this point, there are, I mean, that's the only thing I know that is allowed you, you could, if you were to do that day.
That's the thing that I would like to make sure we know what's going.
And.
I know, I know the newer easement provided for some agricultural buildings.
That was my understanding, is that agricultural building is allowed, but not residential.
Yeah, and they're fairly specific in the current conservation easement about what those are, and I don't, I'll have to, I'll look at it before the.
So I got the, I got the, I got the easement, it seemed like one that I accessed was for next door from the application materials, so I got that one. There had been interested neighborhood residents concerned even about the potential to develop this case. And then the other procedural thing in my mind is just we're having a joint meeting. So I've just worked with Brogan to try to establish our, our record of the, we're, this meeting, because it's in a sense out of the regular rhythm of meetings and whatnot. I asked for it to be posted here in the.
It has to be noticed, yeah. Are there any other special requirements or?
Just going to be demonstrated, yeah, it's a special meeting, so.
All right.
Location, time, date. We're on the dates.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to talk about?
And my understanding is this is a preliminary subdivision, but we're at the preliminary plat stage, that's what the plat that I'm reviewing has.
Okay. Two remaining things here are the.
I'm back.
Good.
Welcome back, Chris. Status of North Chestnut Business District applications. And the thing that you've, you've set around for our, what is it, our town, which my browser wouldn't work with, but what the problem was, but maybe it's a JavaScript. I don't remember, but I didn't try very hard. So let's talk about North Chestnut. Did, did you say anything that there was an application coming?
I don't know if I said that in a public meeting context. I had, I received an interest in submission for pre-app for this meeting, and I was in the office alone at noon, and it appeared to me that it wasn't within the, I considered it was a two-week submission window, and it was within that period, so I, I did push back. I think I've heard that that, that specific iteration may, may not come forward, but it's uncertain.
Okay. What's the status of the review that we made of the code changes that you suggested? We, we sent that to the village board?
We sent it, it was sent via Tom Rocker, I assume. I don't know if it's come up, came up with the previous board, you all haven't actually met yet, have you?
Yeah, the plan is that it will be on the agenda next Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
Good. Are there other things that we have to look at?
Can I make a comment about this?
Yes, please.
I have to say, the more I look at this zoning, as it's written, the less I like it.
Yeah.
The changes or the original zoning?
The original. The changes we requested are good, but I keep seeing more problems. The way this is constructed, for example, is that all principal and special permitted uses in the B2 core business are allowed in this zone. And currently, B2 allows all principal and special permitted uses in B1, which means this is the most.
Do I do anything?
You can basically do anything that's allowed.
Yeah.
Any businesses, right.
And so, for example, we have, because of that, you can build a hotel. And so, for example, we have, because of that, you can build a hotel or a hostel as a permitted use, but then further down in this code for this district, North Gateway, it lists them as special permitted uses. So we have a contradiction.
You know, this is one of the highest priorities, I think, we, we have, is to make sure that the changes that were made in the last sweeping revisions to our code don't have unintended consequences, which, some of which we've seen, but there are many more. And this is a great example of one that, that's really going to be a problem for us.
I'm beginning to feel like this whole, I don't know if we can do this, but especially since there's a property owner who's caught in a bit of a bind because of the, that his building burned down. But I feel like there's an awful lot that needs reconciling in this before we start seeing applications for it, because it isn't clear that this actually conveys, I guess I would like to know, at least individually, what was the intent when the Village Board passed this particular code? Because there's, it seems to me interpretable ambiguities about whether they actually wanted one-story buildings to continue to be allowed, that were retail only, or not.
You know, the, is it BN?
Yes.
The BN report that has all those fine illustrations that calmed me down when I saw it, because that looked like a good example of intent.
Right.
That this is what it should look like. Yet the wording allows anything.
Yep.
And it's why I was upset that they didn't include the illustrations in there. I don't know how much meat that would, how much weight that would hold, but the way this now is clearly a problem.
I mean, do we have any ability to sort of put any applications for this area on hold until we sort this out and try to make it?
The Village Board can establish a moratorium, but that's.
That itself is a process.
Yes, it is, and it's ugly.
Yes.
And that would really affect that, the one owner who has.
I know, exactly.
His immediate plans.
I mean, that could take months just to get that.
But, but at the same time, we want to affect that owner.
True, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, not personally, but that's a significant piece of property in the district.
The adoption of moratorium, as you said, is ugly, but it doesn't take that long.
No? Okay. And we could do it for a short.
It could be done in two meetings. The legislation can be drafted, presented, heard at one meeting, public hearing at next meeting, and adopted. It's exempt from secret, so.
Has to go to the county.
Has to go to the county, correct.
It does, yeah. And I, there would be some pushback in public hearing, sure, there'd be some.
Really?
So maybe a month and a half.
Do you think there's interest at the Village Board level?
Tim?
Tim? Do you think there's interest at the Village Board level, try to sort this out quickly? Because I know we're going to have applications coming in.
Yeah, it seems like a good idea to me.
Okay.
Speaking as one.
Sure.
Well, it could be very narrowly defined, more term, just in that district.
Yeah.
You're just going to say plans and special permits, and maybe not residential uses, whatever's there.
Now, we have to be, I would, I would like to know, there's something about the rights of a property owner having a fire, let's say, that he can rebuild something without, on the same footprint, right? And he doesn't have to go through site plan, is that right?
No.
Good. What is it that he has to go through?
Well, I mean, he may be a prior non-conforming use, something like that.
Yes.
You can't say that he's no longer allowed by the zoning because he was a prior non-conforming use, he was not abandoned for more than a year. You know, continues as a use.
Or if it was built, or if it was built before that, the North Gateway District was.
Right, that would make it prior, not what they call a prior non-conforming use. He was a legal use before, and even though the zoning changed, he's non-conforming. But if it burns down, he's alright to rebuild as a continuing use.
Yes.
That's, that much is true. But he may still have to go through site plan, whatever the.
Right, but he can build a hotel, let's say.
Right, right. Cannot build a hotel.
Right. So that's.
And the moratorium would apply to him as well as anyone else.
Yes.
If there's a moratorium on, on that, on any commercial use in the B-three district for six months, until you sort out the zoning, you gotta change.
So that would prevent him from rebuilding?
Yeah, yes, it would, because he'll be a permit for what he builds.
So, so knowing that particular applicant a little bit, I mean, more than just this in the abstract, I think part of the problem is that financially, he's got issues with the insurance company and the fact that he has basically a year from the date of the fire. And so I would be concerned that we institute something that then puts him in jeopardy. Then he'd have to go for variance.
Would we exempt him?
Yes, you could exempt. And if it makes sense, it's fair to everyone, you can, you have exemptions. You could have exemptions for pending applications. Some moritaries do that. Or you could have exemptions for certain types of uses. If that is a use you're not going to be looking at. You could have exemptions for a prior non-conforming use that's being rebuilt. And you could define it, not for him personally, but generically, for whatever the situation is.
I mean, alternatively.
And there's also a hardship variance, and once you have a moratorium, you must have a hardship variance in it.
Right.
And that would be a classic hardship. I have to do this within twelve months or else I'm going to lose my insurance. That would be a basis for the, about him to go forward.
I mean, alternatively, since this is, at this point, the only site where there seems to be possible applications for.
We don't know that.
No, I guess we don't know that.
Well, we have one before us. The Goodville Church is applying.
They're not missed, they're not missed.
That's B-two.
That's B-two.
That's B-two.
Yeah, they're a little further.
A little sound for it.
But it would stop us from talking to potential developers in that area in a time?
Well, it would stop you from, well, depending on your right, but generally, your right sort of stops any processing of any application, any acceptance of any application.
So pre-applications could still be entertained?
If you wanted to, yeah.
I mean, I guess I was wondering.
Because that guarantees what comes out of it.
I, I too am sensitive to his plight.
Yeah.
But only to the extent that it would prevent him from rebuilding what he lost, not from a grander.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering though, I'm concerned that we might force him into a position where he ends up rebuilding, even though that might not be his first choice.
It won't be his first choice. I mean, I'm, excuse me for projecting, but it would seem to me that someone in his position would want to maximize his.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, but.
So it's not going to be his first choice to build the same building.
Right, but if there's a, if we create a moratorium, then it might create a conflict where he has.
But if we have a moratorium with a hardship exemption, that would allow him to come before us with whatever his plans would be, the new plans, not to rebuild exactly the same thing, and then we would go through the application process as though it was normal, correct?
Because it was on the.
Because it was on the hardship.
That's my understanding of it.
But if, if you lose this insurance money, but for being able to proceed, then that would be a basis for a hardship, no matter what he's going to build.
Right.
Whatever the application he wants, but you could then hear that.
Regardless of what he wants to build.
Right, doesn't have to build the same thing.
I think that's probably how we would have tested.
So are you saying that I would be okay with you if you built a four-story hotel?
No, what I'm saying is that because of the hardship, that he would have the right and the opportunity to come and make an application for that four-story hotel, and then we would treat it according to how we.
So Mike?
How we what?
Well, yeah, I got stuck all of a sudden, because we don't have anything.
That's right.
You know, that's my concern, is that we have, he'd have to come under the existing code, which is full of.
Holes.
Full of problems, yeah.
Which has no limitations, basically.
So that's, that's, I'm wondering if we, if there's an advantage to just asking the Village Board to move as expeditiously as possible to, and work with us to sort out the problems, make clear what the intent of this code is, and then make sure the language is unambiguous and not contradictory. And just go ahead and do that in the abs, I mean, can, would it be more beneficial to just have them do that and not worry about the moratorium? Or do those in parallel, put the moratorium in place? I don't want to delay the revisiting the code while the moratorium is being done. A month and a half might actually be a problem.
Well, I wouldn't want to delay it either. I would want them to go forth in parallel, but.
Okay, is that possible? That's what I was sure.
Why isn't it possible?
I don't know, I'm just.
I mean, we would, I would like to propose to the Village Board changes that we would like to make.
Yeah.
And probably before that, we'd have to do the moratorium to get that started and in place. But if we can get our recommendations to the Village Board within a month.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just, I'm asking the question.
I'm, I'm, I don't know, I don't know the answer really, but that's the way I would like to see it. What do you think, George? You make some scuffing.
Well, no, it's something quick to rewrite something, and that's, usually that's why we end up with what we have. I mean, the proposal to make all retails one big, big use, and then to make all B-ones okay in B-two and okay in B-three, it's just, it just became meaningless. But it seemed nice to, to get rid of all those details we had before that were causing people problems. But then solved the problem, because it was, it's sort of lost control of the process.
I would like to make this Gateway District work the way we thought it was going to work.
Right.
The way the drawings depicted it. And, and to not sell farm, to not let, let anybody do whatever they want, as long as it's a current business use.
Well, if you have the BN plan, whatever it was.
Yeah.
The proposal that was adopted, that gives you the basis of having a planning document behind it, that you could then implement the zoning. Because you can't, you shouldn't ever just write zoning without planning behind it, some kind of comprehensive plan. So if you have that, and what you're saying is that the zoning doesn't really implement what was planned, it's possible to do it in a month, I suppose, if people get together and meet every couple of days and go through drafts of trying to get it to reflect what was in the plan. That might work. At least it could be done quicker that way. But still, it's something, might, might to work it all through, because it takes a lot of people looking at things and finding the little places where it doesn't really, like Michael's great at this, where, where, wait a minute, there's a conflict here, then you're right. And it's a, and that's related to the other sections of the code, too. Not just, it's not like an isolated set of words.
What do you think, David? You've been quiet here. I know, I don't like that one. Put your head on the block with the rest of us.
I sound like a good joker, yeah.
I mean.
Put everything aside.
I think there's, the, the things that Maurice, if I understand what you're saying, the things that you especially like, and I agree, about the plan is related to form, that is what it would look like, but doesn't necessarily address uses.
Use, that's right.
And the things that bother me are the contradictions internally about uses and the incredibly generous smorgasbord of uses that are possible.
And those very things that are really the most onerous, I think are the easiest to fix.
Right.
I think.
I mean.
And I would like to preface this to what I was trying to say before. My best boss once told me, the further away you get from having to solve a problem, the easier it becomes to solve. So for me, I can tell George, you know, unless it's in a month, you know, this is a six-month deal, because I have no idea what I'm talking about, right? But I really would like to simplify the process, if possible, by restoring what everybody thought this proposal from BN stood for, what it, what it would result.
Right.
And the drawings, to me, were critical in, in defining that.
Right.
And if we can remove the changes that were made sweeping in all the, all the uses that this last, I'm a little refrained from characterizing it, but the last change brought, I think will be of good ways.
Yeah.
Done.
No, I think the illustrations will help better define what we'd like the, the form of this area to look like, so it becomes more of.
For those of us who are not familiar with the BN document, could we get a copy of the BN document?
It was sent to you at least twice.
We have, yeah, I'll send it to you again.
Okay.
Brendan sent it.
Yeah, yeah.
Once, I think Brogan sent it once.
Yeah, yeah, no sweat.
Michael thinks that.
I don't. Yeah, I mean, it's a PDF, so there's probably a hard copy somewhere in one of your departments, but I don't know where, or in the mayor's office, maybe, I'm not sure. I, you know, one of the things that might be worth researching is the public hearings for this, because I suspect, and I'm speculating, that the reason that a lot of this retail is allowed is because these are pre-existing uses, at least some of them, not all of them by any means, but.
You used the word retail.
Yeah.
Intentionally? Retail or non-residential is a better characterization?
Non-residential, sorry, non-residential, commercial. Right, retail has a specific meaning.
Business.
I mean, I think there was deliberate intent to make sure that businesses that exist already in the B-three, highway-related businesses, would not become non-conforming. So that's why you can have gas, you can have auto repair facilities and gas stations and things of that sort.
The other example in that corridor, actually, you know, I'm presuming it's in the corridor, I didn't check the zoning. But we, we, we might think also about the site plan thresholds. I don't know, I, I need to look at the, I'm going to qualify that I need to look at the site plan threshold, but for example, the car wash. Did you folks review a site plan for that?
No. You mean when they upgraded the?
It didn't come to us. And I, I asked several times, why didn't it?
No, it never came to us.
So that is, in a sense, a.
You mean for the doggy.
A highway-oriented use, and there's been changes in lighting and signage, cases like that, which are also models of thresholds that we can think of as well.
And the other thing that we've had a discussion about, I don't mean to derail this, but we spoke about digital signs, some.
Yeah.
And George, you gave us the opinion that anything that, I'm not forget how you put it, but you said that these all are digital signs, and the converting in the code won't cover them, like the gasoline price sign that says Stewart's. And, and there are many houses of worship that have psalm readings that change every day, and there are some things that just flash open, which we have in, in, in the village now that are annoying, and I think those conflict with our code now. Because it's something like, I don't know if it's animated or blinking, we can't have blinking lights. I think that's what our, anyhow.
But are they blinking, right? Digital signs aren't necessarily blinking. So you have to regulate digital signs, that's, that's a new, new issue that.
Keep hearing me say that, yeah, I'm trying to get around it. Okay, so that's something else that we have to, that I would like to do. Whether we attach this higher priority to it as these other things, I don't know, but it can get really ugly around here if, if we have a few of those things in the village. I don't want to see that. So what do you think, Mr. Gilmore? I mean, do you think we should?
I am, I am listening. I think that I, I hear consistent, and by consistent, I also mean at the last meeting, I hear the call for illustrated guidance within the district that we speak. And I, I take it you've all taken a, a hard look at those pictures, and we can consider those. I focused a lot of my time on the text of the law. I did hear you last time saying to think about the ways that pictorial guidance can be provided, and then I've heard discussions about form and uses, and we've talked about lighting and signage and a few other submission thresholds. and we've talked about lighting and signage and a few other submission thresholds. And also then some of the legislative research, do.
And this digital sign business scares me a bit, not as much as a hotel in our Gateway District, but, but the fact that we...
So I might as well check the, I might as well pursue a little bit of your rationale with hotels, where we don't like hotels.
No, it's not that I don't like hotels, but I want to make sure that we, we know what we're doing when we approve code that allows almost anything. And hotel is just a straw dog or...
Very good.
That's what I think, but...
I might have cut you off, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm, I'm used to it, it's all right. And I never recover from those. So, but the digital sign thing, I would like your opinion at some point soon whether we should do something literal to do that, George says, that we need specific code for that. And so what would it take to, to do that?
You've got a list of prohibited signs, you could add digital signs, but it needs to be spelled out and defined so everyone understands what you're talking about. You have no flashing signs or lights shall be permitted, but that's not what you're talking about. I mean, that is something you're talking about, flashing digitals, but digitals also are just bright, usually red letters that...
Or LED.
Can be very glaring.
Yeah, or LED, yeah, even if it's the Lord's word, you know, it can be a nuisance to traffic and ugly to some people who are just driving or walking by.
So that's 21225D.
Then you put a definition?
Yeah.
In 215.
I mean, I know Harley is doing with this now, Tom Lloyd.
I highly put it on, they did a moratorium. They did a moratorium.
They're working on it, but they're gonna allow some. I think they're allowing digitals in certain situations, but like...
I got a couple of real bad ones.
Okay, I don't want to beat this up, but yeah.
So going back to the, to the North Gateway.
Yes.
Do we want to take any action, make any recommendations to the village board at this point? Or do we just, do we want to officially put out the...
Do you have something to propose?
Well, I'm not sure if there's a consensus that we would want to...
Well, then that's why we have the mechanism for...
Well, I'm not sure that, I'm not 100% comfortable about a moratorium, so...
Well, that's why I asked if you had something to propose now, so we could... If anybody has anything to propose about this, we can, we can see if the majority of us agree with it.
My proposal to the village board would be, in addition to the comments that we submitted two weeks ago, that, that the village board take a more comprehensive look at why this district has the most generous allowed principal permitted uses of all of the commercial districts in the village.
Well, I'm still unclear that...
Anyway, that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? And is that enough? I, I would try that. Is there a second to Michael's motion? Okay, Liz, you say something.
When the Gateway District on North Chestnut Street was created, I'm kind of assuming that that blurb that we found later on that says anything that's allowed in B1 is also allowed in B2 and therefore is also allowed in... That, did that come before or after the Gateway District was created?
After.
So when that blurb got added in, the unseen consequence was that it then allowed everything in the Gateway District.
Yeah, this was wholly rewritten. I don't think there's anything left from the previous B3 in this.
No, that, that wasn't...
Is that what you meant?
I, I think what she meant, well, sorry, go ahead, why don't you say what you meant?
That it was not an intended consequence to allow everything in the Gateway.
Yeah, that I don't know. Doesn't seem like it. But that's my question. What, what was it?
So if that was not the intent, then why wouldn't the original uses listed for the Gateway District apply and not allow everything?
Because they do allow everything. I mean, the, the problem that we have had, that we have been fighting with the recent code changes is the unintended consequences and that we never got an intention of why they changed the law. What, what were they trying to accomplish? I know some of it had to do with building on Mohawk and Plains Road and Pencil Hill, but I don't, I don't have a clear understanding of what they tried to accomplish. And my bet is it did not mean to sweep in the North Gateway, or Chestnut Gateway District.
So could we make a motion that the North Gateway, North Chestnut Gateway District revert to its original...
List of uses?
Yes.
That's, that's one thing, yes. And, and the other is some of the inconsistencies that Michael has already shown us and now we find more. So it does require a review. I would like to see a review of the whole district's zoning code.
And so could we say that we wanted to revert to its original intended uses until a review of the code can be made by the village board?
I'm not sure what you mean by the original uses.
Well, I mean, if, if, would that, would that narrow the uses?
To undo the changes that...
Yeah. It would undo the change, but it would narrow the part that they...
To the old B3?
Yeah, in the old B3, right.
There was an amendment effective April 29, 2013, which was local law number 5 of 2013, that changed all the uses, but was the change in the uses I think they were now having trouble with. That's the one that brought in the B1, B2, B3, sort of cumulative thing.
Oh, I see. So that happened after, so that was April?
That's April.
Seems like there were a lot of changes, speaking generally, seems like there are a lot of zoning changes between spring 2013 and mid 2014.
So that was passed before this law was passed. The North Chestnut Gateway was added to the, on July 8, 2013.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, that was B3, isn't it?
Yeah.
So they just changed the name, I assume?
No, they didn't just change the name. They changed the entire, everything was, everything about this is new. B3 was basically called sort of Highway Business. And it was a much more traditional listing of, of uses, minimum site was 40,000 square feet and that sort of thing.
You're saying in July 3, of 2013?
That's what they said.
Which is two years ago.
Yeah. They added...
Were you on the board then? You were, Rich.
Yeah.
Do you remember?
Does it get your fault, Rich?
Not my fault.
You can say that because you've worked a lot.
I think this happened before I was chair and before I was a member of the public party board.
2013?
No, not 2013, I know that was, I'm, I'm saying the North Chestnut, no, the B3 district. It was called B3, forget the name. And forget the change that made the name change. I'm saying that the B3 district, when it was established by virtue of the BN proposal. That's gotta be like 2009 or 10.
Or before.
Well, but it didn't actually, according to this, it wasn't codified. The plan goes back much further, but the actual code it says was added.
Okay, so, so you're talking about when the village board did it, not when the planning board did it?
The village board.
Okay, that's possible. But I know it did not happen while I was on the planning board. So, so I'm saying this is like five or six years ago.
That, that's quite possible. Yeah, I know, because, and I...
Okay, I don't know why the village board would take so long.
This was adopted in July, so, so this...
It repealed the B3 Highway Business District and then it added this...
So all those other changes went away with the, sort of the major change in July 8, 2013. So it's not as easy as I thought it would be to revert.
Yeah, and I don't know that, there's no, nothing to revert to anymore.
No.
Because the B3 doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist anymore.
It totally doesn't exist anymore.
I didn't want to revert to the B3, I wanted to remove the change that made the B3 North Chestnut Gateway District so liberal.
That's carried into...
That's how they did it.
That's part of this North Chestnut Street Gateway in July of 2013, but you can't tell where it came in. It's all built in now. That permission to, to have any use allowed in B2, which in B2 allows anything in B1, is built right into this change that was made. Has a whole section in 2013. So you can't, you can't sort of, you know, exercise it out. Because then you would lose a lot of permitted uses. It's sort of hard to say what the original permitted use intention was.
That's my point, right. That's what I'd like to find out.
And then she went back and read the BN report again and...
I think it's more than that. I think you'd actually have to listen to the conversations of the village board and the public hearings and try to get a sense of where, what their direction was.
So in that case, it would need more time. It would take some time.
It would take some time. It definitely takes some research, I think.
I'm just like a quiet lump. Save us. Mr. Mayor, do you have, can you...
What would be the special use permit?
Oh, I don't, I don't know that I want to do that.
Why not?
Because the uses are still too little.
Words.
For a special use permit.
That just means that it, there are specific criteria for what that means. Doesn't mean it's... I mean, there's some uses that I would argue probably shouldn't be there at all.
Is your internet's working?
It is.
The problem is you go like this, it's a case of standard.
I think we talked about legislative intent at last meeting.
If you don't put it in the code and somebody comes in with it.
There was no action by the trustees.
Well, if it's a good idea.
Consideration starting by that.
But you know...
Hearing you ask for...
I'm sorry, performance.
Work on legislative intent.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if you could bring to the village board, I'm happy to put it as a resolution, but some sense of urgency for the exposure that we have to the way the code is currently written. And I, I don't know, I, I don't feel capable of forming a resolution to fix any of this now or even a path to do it, but we need one.
Yeah, no, I need, I think we, we need, I mean, possibly a committee who wants to do this, some planning board and village board members and David, if he's available.
George, you know the mess we're in, what do you think?
Well, the immediate thing is to deal with the use issue and, you know, the rest of this section maybe does reflect a lot of what BN had in mind. There, there are a lot of standards here which are definitely changed from the way B3 was. But there's no reason you couldn't immediately, with some urgency, have a group focus on the proper use chart for this district. Just go through 213G and look at the uses allowed. The principal permitted use is the main issue here because that's what sweeps in everything else. But, but the other list, the special permitted uses, might be quite good. Might be all right.
I'd rather just, I'd rather than reference other portions of the code, which then reference other portions of the code, I'd rather actually have a list here.
That's what I think you should do. Actually sit down, write out what you think should be a principal permitted use in this district.
It's a, it's own list.
It's a own list, and that would be a fairly limited task that could be done fairly quickly.
We could do the B1, B2, and B3.
There, there's also, it seems like there's a rationale for that in the sense that there were interest in promoting form within this corridor. So presumably BN study has some of the discussions possibly about uses. I'm comfortable working on that, either developing something or working with a group. Working with a group certainly does seem to make sense so that there can be division of tasks and a variety of perspectives. Certainly in my mind, that question did come up. Are there any other boards or committees or commissions you might consult in the process? But also sensing your sense of urgency, the planning board is interested in getting into this aspect of its long-range planning and zoning and, Liz?
But I just, I would just focus on that list. Because to get beyond that, you start to get into, but maybe as a subset have, look at the illustrations in the BN report. There's no reason you can't include them as an appendix to the zoning. I mean, there's no reason, technically, legally, you can't do it, it's always somewhat controversial, but many, many codes now have an appendix of forms, shapes, illustrations that are guidance. And they do have, what they have is the, they provide the authority for the planning board to say that's not what we're expecting in this neighborhood. So I mean, maybe those two things would be enough to take on and get done in a month of six or seven or eight meetings.
I'd be happy to help.
Never I've done this, since then I've been at least a meeting a week or else it doesn't happen. And I've done that for two years.
Tim, can you try getting ecod360.com? Ecode, yeah, on, online, right now, let's see if you can get it. I can't get it on my computer.
General Code Publishers.
Yeah, it's working.
Try again. So, Mr. Planner? Is there anything we, we want to... Well, you know, I, I did want to ask one other question. I apologize for adding this at the end, but many of us received an email from Bren White asking us for information, for places to look in the code for things that are a problem. And apparently she was hired by the village board and to do something for some short-term project and I don't know anything about the details. But I was surprised, more like shocked and maybe even worse, that this came at a time when we have Dave here. And I like the idea of someone being here doing this rather than there. And I was wondering what, do you know what the specifics of her...
I don't know the terms of the arrangement, but that's a great idea, I want to find out.
Because I'd really love to...
See what's expected.
Yeah.
I did send a note to Ms. White today, asking for clarification on the email, asking for some of the context of the project, such as its scope and schedule and budget and whatnot.
I would love to see what the village board...
When I left at four o'clock or so, or 4:30, I hadn't gotten a response.
Yeah, okay. Because my preference would be that, that this man be involved in that more than Bren and if, if we have a contract with her, well, there we are, but I would love to know what the terms are. Okay, so do we want to do something before we leave about, about North Chestnut Gateway?
I'd like to see us form a committee and start biting at this elephant if we're gonna eat it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that and I agree with George's recommendation.
Could I agree with Mr. Stefan said, I just didn't...
I said, I think we ought to form a committee and start biting at this elephant if we're gonna eat it, yeah. It's the only way to do it.
How can you restate that, vegetarian?
No. Some of my favorite meals are vegetarians, you know that.
Okay, so, um...
Okay.
What?
Nothing.
Well, but let's, let's do something. Do, do we want to establish a...
I'm going to attend a meeting that reviews the uses in the B1, 2, 3.
Mr. Planner, can, can I ask you to take a lead role in this since you are here? And try to figure out... And try to figure out how often we should meet and get something going, I would love your hands and eyes on this thing. Since you are here and have our best interests at heart.
I mean, since this zoning takes into account all the uses in those business zones, I'd like to see a list of all the uses.
You wanted B2.
Of all, yeah.
The cumulative list of the total.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to find something that's not included.
Right, well, let's take a look at that list and start chipping away at it.
Thank you to the general retail.
But I heard you say especially B1 and B2.
Well, that's what it refers to.
That's what it refers to.
At this point, all principal permitted and special permitted uses in B1 and B2 are allowed as principal permitted uses in this Chestnut, except for the ones that, anyway, Liz, did you say you wanted to do this?
Yes, I would like to volunteer also.
All right, then I'll step back.
Why?
Because otherwise it's a public meeting every time you guys meet, if there's three of us.
Yeah.
Why would prefer you be...
It's a quorum, then it's a public meeting.
Yeah, and I assume...
I would step back, you're a much better researcher than I am. My dyslexia can't put that list together.
Okay, anyway, I, so all I'm saying is I don't think...
Two so far.
Why couldn't we have three?
Because that's a quorum.
A quorum of the planning board and we have to vote.
But if it's a subcommittee...
Doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
So, so you and Liz?
Sure.
Okay?
Is that all right?
Yeah, no, you're a much better researcher.
With the leaders and come out with some promises and announcements.
Yeah, let us know when you want us to meet. Okay.
They have a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Oh wait, you didn't mention the transportation, oh, you did.
Yeah, we did.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Done.
Thank you, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're on it. Thank you, everybody.